It's not giving me a mouse.
You good? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna open the meeting tonight. And could everyone please stand and join us with a pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you. Okay, um, second item, does anybody have any public comments for this evening's meeting? Okay?
Hi.
Just come, just if anyone has any public comments, just come to the microphone, tell us who you are and where you live, and feel free.
Hi, my name is Gwen Tomel, and I live in Maynard on Powdermill Road along with my father at 68 Powdermill Road. And my comment is that I think due to the fact that the cemetery has been so abandoned that we hire a landscaping company for a month to do the perpetual care and get things straightened out. There is a branch behind the tomb that has been there from the storm. There is grass gone to seed. There are markers of veterans that I can pick up and walk away with. There are holes that have not been filled. I'm not even talking about the water problem, that we don't seem to have water for the older people during weekends, or that there was no notification for Memorial Day. The Maynard Historic Society also needs to be aware that they're failing in their job because our history is being covered over by grass. We have veterans, we have town, and we have the Historical Society, all failing to do a reasonable job. And I have the pictures to prove it. I'm not against putting in time to help the gentleman because they are behind. And I've done so as well as my son. But our history is being covered up by grass because people aren't even weed-whacking well. There's string, there's rocks, there's grass. The fact that we're not mowing down by the pond, the fact that the tomb is not mowed completely and this branch not taken away. We spent a lot of money on a fence. We spent a lot of money on glass for the tomb. And I'm sorry, let's hire a professional, have him come in for a month, straighten everything out, and go from there. We need something because the older people are scared to complain anymore. And hopefully, this will get through to you. I don't know if it will or not, but people are tired of it. And the fact that the older generation, that get up at four and show up at seven and there's no water, or start showing up at 4:30, four for the evening and there's no water, is disheartening. They're not backfilling with loom. They're not filling anything that is sunk. We had, you know, we paid for trees. Why are we paying for trees? Go behind the shack, go down behind the pond, go to Marlborough Road, go to Summer Street, pick a tree and move it. There is no reason to waste our resources this way. None. I don't know about the plumbing. We have to deal with that. But the fact that, this is when Father's Day, there's no water. I watched a couple put loom and potting soil on their son's grave. Okay, great, somebody threw seed. We have no water, you can't water that. So now the seed's dead, so what kind of waste of money was that? I hope it gets through. It's radical, and I understand it, but like I said, the older generation is not being heard. And I know, because I worked under three foremen in that cemetery. Nick Kowalczuk, Jerry Flood, and they called him Tree Top Vincent. So I know what it's like. And I know it's hot. And you know what? You carry your water bottle and you go slow. Out of all the years that I worked there, I went back to the shack twice, back to the main barn, twice due to heat. That was it. And if we're going to continue to accept unacceptable work, because you wouldn't pay a landscaper for the work that's being done, then you know what? It's up to you guys at this point. But what kind of, you know, heritage are we gonna have when it's all covered up? Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Deb Rousell, and I live at 4 Grant Street. And I just would like to make a comment from what you said about the Historical Society. I just walked two weeks ago that whole cemetery to find all the veterans that are there, all their stones that were either broken or lying down, and we took a record of that. Okay? I'm not on the Historical Society, but my wife is. And she and I spent two days walking through the cemetery trying to get that so that the Historical Society has a grant that they're gonna be able to restore some of those things. And I just wanted you to know that they are on top of that. I do agree there are some areas in the cemetery that need more care. And I know we're under tight financial problems, and there are a lot of people that would volunteer to help, but I know because of unions, you can't do that. So those of us who do walk through there occasionally just make do and fix things without telling anybody. So I just want you to know, the Historical Society is on top of that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have public comments this evening?
Lee Karas, Great Road. I just wanna make a point of clarification on what the last two speakers have said. It's the Historical Commission, which is an official body of the town, that has the grant to do some work. The Historical Society at this point really has almost no members, no meetings, and the focus of their work is on the archive process that they're doing in the old medical building at the mill. So it's the Commission, not the Society, that got the designation of National Landmark for the cemetery and is involved in this tombstone effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? All right, move on to the next item. Next item is the bond loan funding enterprise funds. I'll read the motion. Yeah, yeah. Maybe a bit. Voted that the sale of 1,900,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2018 bonds of the town dated August 8, 2018, referred to as the bonds, to Fidelity Capital Markets, a division of National Financial Services LLC, at the price of $1,969,756.30, and accrued interest is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond should be payable on August 1 of the year's end in the principal amounts that bear the interest at the prospective rates as follows. 2019, $80,000, interest rate 4%. 2020, $80,000, 4%. 2021, $80,000, 4%. 2022, $90,000, 4%. 2023, $95,000, 4%. 2024, $95,000, 4%. 2025, $100,000, 4%. 2026, $105,000, 4%. 2027, $105,000, 4%. 2028, $110,000, 4%. 2029, $85,000, 4%. 2030, $85,000, 4%. 2031, $90,000, 3.125%. 2035, $380,000, 3.375%. And 2038, $320,000, 3.5%. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated July 18, 2018, and a final official statement dated July 25, 2018, the official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, and approved and adopted. Further voted that the town treasurer and the board of selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C-212 in such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the treasurer and bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds. Further voted that each member of the board of selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, and time and agenda for the meeting was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours or all hours in or on the municipal building that the town offices and the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in 940 CMR 29.03 (2) (B), at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays, prior to the time of the meeting, and remain so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decisions in connection with the sale of the bonds were taken in executive session, all in accordance with general law C 30A 18-25 as amended. Do we have a second?
Second. Can you repeat that?
Yes.[769.82][769.82](Laughter). Give me a minute. Let me have a glass of water.
Quick question. I'm assuming that this is a fairly routine process that we do on a fairly routine basis over time to try to capture some better interest rates when they become available. So I can then further assume that by the time we hit 2035, when there's a $380,000 hit on the future residents of Maynard, that we'll probably have refinanced this mortgage at that.
That's a quick question. I'd have to refer to Cheryl.
Yeah.
It's possible, Dave. We may be able to refinance or reduce what the interest rates do if they go up.
Yeah.
So we did do that once, I think last year, we funded some loans.
Yeah.
We just have to keep an eye on it.
Okay, 'cause I don't think I'll be sitting in this seat in 2035, but...
You never know.
The residents that are, we'd have to take that impact of $380,000, which is a big hit.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any questions? Any comments? Okay. All those in favor? Thank you. This goes with that. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Now, the auditor's report. Starting with the management letter or the report? Either.
Chairman De Silva, the honorable members of the board of selectmen, Town Administrator Johnson, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Torenzio Volpecelli. I'm the representative of the firm Roselli Clark &amp; Associates, Certified Public Accountants. We're based out of Woburn, Massachusetts, and we were engaged to perform an audit of your financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2017.
Can you turn it off for one second? Katie, this isn't being televised. So somebody just sent me a message and asked if we could make sure it's televised.
Would you also hold the mic for us?
Thanks.
Okay. To answer your question, Chairman De Silva, I actually have certain professional standards that require that I go over what we call required disclosures, or required communications, rather. I'm going to abbreviate it as much as I can because this is in writing, this was previously provided to the town. However, this is my first appearance before this board. Again, we were engaged to perform a financial statement audit for the town for the year ended June 30, 2017. We conduct our audit in accordance with governmental auditing standards, which are issued by the Comptroller General of the United States, as well as generally accepted auditing standards of the United States of America. With respect to significant auditing matters, management of the town is responsible for the selection and use of appropriate accounting policies. Note 2 to the financial statements describes what those significant accounting policies are. During 2017, there were no new significant accounting policies adopted, and there were no changes in the application of existing policies. We noted no transactions that were entered by the town during that year where there was a lack of authoritative guidance or consensus. And all significant transactions have been recognized in the financial statements in the proper period. In 2017, the town adopted Gatsby Statement 74, Financial Reporting for Post-Employment Benefit Plans Other Than Pension Plans. This is commonly referred to as OPEB. This was the first of a two-year accounting pronouncement implementation relative to OPEB. And you should refer to the informational portion section of our management letter, which is dated December 4, 2017, for further details. Accounting estimates are an integral part of the financial statements which are prepared by management. The most sensitive estimates affecting the town include the valuation of the total pension liability for the town's pension plan, which is actuarially determined and is disclosed in the notes of the financial statements. The town's pension plan was subject to an independent audit for the year ended December 31, 2016, which is included in your June 30, 2017 financial statements. In connection with that audit, key factors and assumptions were used to develop the total pension liability that were found to be reasonable in relation to the financial statements as taken as a whole. There are other keys in significant estimates, including the net OPEB obligation, which is also actuarially determined, the estimated useful lives of the town's capital assets, liabilities for compensated absences, as well as the allowance for doubtful accounts. These are all described in Note 2 to the financial statements in the most sensitive disclosures. Can also be found in Note 3 with respects to the pension plan and the OPEB plans. We're pleased to report to you that we've encountered no significant difficulties in dealing with management in performing or completing our audit. Professional standards require us to accumulate all known and likely misstatements identified during the audit, other than those that are clearly trivial, and communicate them to the appropriate level of management. None of the misstatements that were detected as a result of our auditing procedures were material, either individually or in the aggregate, to the town's financial statements as a whole. That's a positive. For the purposes of this discussion, a disagreement with management is a financial, accounting, reporting, or auditing matter, whether or not resolved to our satisfaction, that could have a significant impact to the financial statements. We're pleased to report to you that there were no such disagreements that came across the audit. We requested certain representations from management that are included in what's referred to as a management representation letter dated December 4, 2017. We applied certain limited procedures that towns required supplementary information related to its pension plans, OPEB plans, and budgetary analyses for its general fund. We did not audit the RSI, and we do not express an opinion on the RSI. And that, folks, concludes what we refer to as our required communications to those in charge of governance. You've been provided a set of financial statements for June 30, 2017. The components of the financial statements essentially are fivefold. Beginning on pages 11 and 12, that's what's referred to as the government-wide financial statements. This is where we take the town's financials, financial activity, and we convert it from a statutory basis to what's called full accrual. This is where we add your fixed assets, your debt, your pension obligations, your OPEB obligations, compensated absences, items that do not normally appear in your statutory accounting records, and they're presented in those financial statements. This would be much akin to, say, a private entity like a Raytheon or Bank of America, where they're presenting everything on a full accrual basis. The next series of pages are what's referred to as the fund-wide financial statements. Those are the financial statements that most closely resemble your statutory books, and are really those are the financial statements that bond rating agencies like Moody's or S&amp;P are focused on. They're taking a hybrid approach. They're focusing in on these financial statements because these are how you're managing your operations, and they're incorporating aspects of the previously described financial statements like your OPEB, like your net pension liability, and working on including those into your long-term planning. We then have the proprietary funds financial statements. That's essentially a water and sewer, and those are prepared as if they are private entities, full accrual. We have fiduciary funds financial statements. That's where you see your pension system, your OPEB trust, which we're pleased to report had an approximate $1.1 million balance at June 30, 2017. And for a community of this size, that is a nice start to that obligation, and your private purpose trust funds. Finally, there are the notes to the financial statements, as well as the management discussion analysis, which precedes the financial statements. You folks have had an opportunity to take a look at the financial statements. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns with respects to the financials? Chairman De Silva, you also brought up that there was a management letter. That management letter is also dated December 4, 2017. I would classify that management as rather benign. There were four informational items, two of them discussing OPEB, one discussing an internal control framework with respects to federal grants, another just highlighting that student activities continues to be in the news. Every handful of years, it seems like something happens at a statewide level, and it creates some issues throughout the Commonwealth. And that was certainly the case in November of 2017. We had, again, described three benign comments, one with respects to old checks and tailings, one with respects to overstatement of withholdings, which is going in the right direction as opposed to being an understatement, which would require the general fund having to pony up some more money. So that was on the positive side. And then another was a need for, to perform risk assessments, which is key in any internal control system. The town's debt burden, which is something we've included in our management letter for many years, is, as we all know, starting to come down. There was, we were first engaged out here, approximately 10 years of really difficult debt payments. At this point in time, we've been auditing you folks for probably six years, and we're starting to see a light at the end of the tunnel, which I'm sure you folks are well aware of. Moody's currently rates your bond, your general obligation bond, as an AA3. That is investment grade. It is the fourth highest rating that Moody's provides for general obligation municipal debt. So you are, again, the fourth highest graded, and it is investment grade. With that, that essentially concludes my presentation, unless there are comments, questions, or concerns.
So this was from, this is obviously from last year. So when do you complete the audit?
The audit of June 30, 2018, I believe, is scheduled for sometime in September. We're pretty fortunate with this community that the finance team is able to close their books in relatively quick order. In fact, last year's audit, while the report is dated December 4, was actually completed sometime in early October, which was just a matter of getting those final ducks in a row that, you know, seemed like hurting the cats trying to get it closed out. But all the heavy lifting was completed by the first week of October. So I believe we're scheduled to come in at sometime in September, and would love to be able to conclude the audit nice and early, and, which is a great sign for the competency and skill set of your finance team.
So this was, this was submitted to the town. Actually, your report was completed when? I'm just looking at the timeline.
My report was completed on December 4, 2017.
Submitted to the town shortly thereafter?
Well, a draft was actually prepared for the town in early October.
Yeah, okay. But when the final report came in, it was in December?
Yes.
Okay. So what I would ask the administration is, going forward, that we see these on a more timely basis. It's not proper, in my eyes, to see them six months after they've been submitted to the town. This is, you know, financial observation of our finances is one of the biggest rules that we have. Second question I have for you is pertaining to OPEB.
Yes.
And you mentioned that, you know, we're doing pretty well based on this community of our size, but I am interested in hearing what your thoughts are, your observations from other communities, and how we rank amongst them. And, you know, there's a, there's a sense, there's a need for fiscal responsibility on the part of all communities to make sure that this gets funded and taken care of, because otherwise we won't meet our obligations down the road. And it's, but of course, there's always that sense that the legislature's gonna move the goalposts and say, "We were only joking. You don't have to do it by whatever the date is that they currently have. It's actually gonna be 50 years out from there." So all the towns that have been cheating and not doing things right are gonna benefit, and ones that have tried to do it right are going to suffer. But anyway, what are your thoughts relative to where we're at, how we're doing, compared to other communities?
Selectmen Gavin, that's a comment that I, a question I get quite often. The answer is, it depends. I have a community, a very large city, that has not put a penny aside. I have a small community that had had a windfall about five years ago and socked away $3.5 million, and because of the size of their community, that's about 20% funded at this point. So it really wildly depends. I have a community, a very affluent community, that is putting a million and a half dollars every single year in there. Currently, there is no requirement by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to have a funding schedule for OPEB, unlike pensions. So pension legislation requires that your pension is fully funded by June 30, 2040. Off the top of my head, I do not recall when your pension system is scheduled to be fully funded, but I do believe it's in advance of the 2040 mandated deadline. What we're seeing a lot of communities do is they're putting aside whatever funds that they can put aside at this point. And depending on when they're going to be fully funded with their pension system, that will give them more budgetary flexibility. For example, if the community is paying $5 million a year for its pension appropriation, when it becomes fully funded, that $5 million might go down to $2.5. So you'll have a $2.5 million, what they're calling a pension windfall. That's the nomenclature that's being out there. That could possibly be used to supplement your OPEB funding. But at this point in time, there is no mandate to fund OPEB. The better-run communities are putting monies aside, however much funding that they can put aside for this, for this future obligation.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else? Questions, comments?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Questions, comments?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The purpose of this particular item is to just discuss the next steps for the board, not to get into the, you know, into the content of the LIP or the content of the MOA or any of that stuff, just to discuss what our next steps are. And we have Town Council here for that purpose, to aid us in those discussions, so we need him along the way. So, break. We'll leave that discussion.
Sure.
And then we'll talk about the next steps for the town of Maynard in relation to the LIP at Potomac Place.
Right. So with the reception of the MOA and the LIP as supplemental, now it's time to decide what the next steps may be. So there's three sort of broad directions the board could take. You can outright reject the proposal that was provided, you can accept it as is, or you can move into some sort of negotiations. And that's to be determined by the board as well, and what format or what size or scope you would want to take. There's a recommendation that would be methodical to a degree, that we'd want to be able to form as much well-researched opinion on it before we could provide any direction as to negotiate it with the developer and whatnot. So I would need a little time to be able to have my staff provide that expertise for that input and whatnot. At a minimum, that's what I would ask. But as far as the board is concerned, if you want to move in the direction of negotiations, again, it would be up to the board, to what size and scale. I have reached out to the town of Acton just to see if they have also got received, and they have, they have received the MOA and the LIP as well. I spoke with their town manager, John Mangiariati. He has spoken with their chair, and they are also trying to formulate where they move next. They don't have a select meeting until August 6th, but he's doing the same process that I would be doing, which is have my department heads provide their input so that he can provide his board recommendation.
So my response, and we've discussed this prior, you and I, you know, individually, that my comment to that would be, until the department heads, being school, fire, finance, DPW, police, all the department heads respond to us with their thoughts and opinions on the LIP itself, that we wouldn't really have any means to make a decision one way or another until we have that information. I don't know if anyone else feels that way, but I mean, if until, if your next step is to suggest to the department heads, here is this LIP, for those who don't have it, including Bill Nemja as well, who's on vacation this week, say, what are their comments, what are their things? That would be what we would use as a basis to make our decisions, I would think. So if anybody else feels differently, just, you know, this would be the time to speak So we had an email that we all had, I had sent earlier when we got the LIP and sent it to you guys, and we had talked about a potential, a possible meeting with the Acton Town Administrator and Chair of their Select Committee and possibly their Town Planner in the three similar positions in Maynard meeting. And that, we've kind of, in discussions with Greg as well, we've put that on hold because the town of Acton has far less information than we even have, which is, you know, we've only had this now for a week, and they didn't have any prior pre-discussions similar to the ones that we had had at different times. So until they have a chance to look at it and talk about it, there's no sense having an Acton come here or having us go to Acton to have that discussion, because they just don't have the information to meet. So that idea has been put on hold as well. But I guess, Turney Costa, what are, you know, what, I guess the question is, what are our, is, insofar as time is concerned, and anybody else can feel free to say, jump in if they wish, as far as time goes, what are we legally obligated to do now that we have a LIP and an MOA in hand?
Sure. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. The answer to that question is, you're not obligated to do anything. So as I explained to you a couple of months ago, I think, when I was last before you, the LIP process is somewhat different than the more traditional Chapter 40B process in the sense that what has now occurred, the submission of a LIP application in draft form to your board, as well as to the Board of Selectmen in Acton, for your consideration and a request that you endorse it, that is what is the trademark of the LIP process. It's what makes that process different from the more traditional process. It is a request that you sponsor or endorse the project, be a co-applicant of sorts to the subsidy for project approval. There is no formal process for seeking that approval. The Chapter 40B regulations and the accompanying guidelines indicate that an applicant is suggested to make application to the municipality's Affordable Housing Trust, if they have one, seek support or endorsement from that trust, make application ultimately to the chief executive officials, which in most towns is the Board of Selectmen, and ultimately seek an endorsement and a letter from the Board of Selectmen supporting the application. There is no timeline, there is no timeframe for that process. I think what you just heard is absolutely correct, because I've had communications with the applicants' council, and I understand that this project is somewhat more complicated than the typical 40B project, only because it does cross municipal boundaries. And so the applicant has essentially made two applications, in the form of a single application document, but presented both to your town and to the town of Acton, and requires endorsements from both, and ultimately will require approvals from zoning boards of appeals in both communities. And so from a timeframe perspective, I think you've got even more flexibility than you otherwise might have. Many developers will enter a community, say, "Here's a proposed LIP application. We like your support, but we have the option of going the more traditional route, the unfriendly 40B route. And so we're going to give you 30 or 60 days to consider what we presented. If you don't like it, so be it. We'll go the traditional route. We don't need your buy-in, we don't need your support to go that way." I think here, where they're coordinating their efforts in Acton and in Maynard, you've got a bit of additional time. Not saying you should sit on your hands by any means, but I think you've got the reality that they're working with Acton as well, and as you just said, through the communications you've had with the town of Acton and their officials, it doesn't appear that they have even as much information as you necessarily have, and so they're undertaking the same sort of process.
Turney Costa, if I may, and if this is getting out of bounds with the discussion here, just immediately shut me down.
Sure.
Have you done any further legal research on the obligations of a community to give up municipal resources to another community as part of a 40B?
I have. And so I was asked that question first by staff in Maynard, and then I think I was asked that question at one of your past meetings. I've attended two, I think, so far, to discuss Chapter 40B generally at the first, and then the LIP process at the second. It's a complicated answer to that question. It's not simply a yes or no, you're obligated, you're not obligated. It depends upon all of the circumstances. As you might imagine, there aren't too many Chapter 40B developments that are located along municipal boundaries. There are a number of them, and several of them that have made their way to the different tribunals, the Housing Appeals Committee, and ultimately to the courts. And so there is some case law that speaks to obligations of a municipality with respect to a project that's located along a municipal boundary. But many of those cases deal with issues that are sort of ancillary to the overall project. So by way of example, a project that is being constructed primarily in Community A, where the buildings themselves are in Community A, the parking is in Community A, but maybe there's a driveway or an entrance that traverses the site and enters in through Community B. And the question becomes, how can Community B have its say? How can they have an opportunity to assure themselves that they're not going to be affected by traffic generation or traffic circulation on their roadways? With respect to projects that are truly split in some respect by municipal boundary, where there are portions of the active part of the project, whether it be buildings or parking or utilities, in each of the communities, and where some utilities are sought from one community, some benefits are sought from some community, from one community, and some other benefits are sought from the other community, there are very few cases that address the issue. The cases that do speak, again, on a case-by-case basis, to the particulars of the contractual relationship between those communities. If we're dealing with a utility, if we're dealing with water or sewer service, for example, is there an intermunicipal agreement that is in effect between the communities that dictates what one community is providing to the other, and what does that intermunicipal agreement say with respect to the obligations of one community to the other? It's very clear from Housing Appeals Committee case law and from further case law in the courts, that the courts have no authority, nor does the HAC, to modify contractual obligations of parties. The HAC has broad authority, and you've heard me say before in the other appearances before you on this topic, that the Housing Appeals Committee far more often than not rules in favors of developers when there are appeals of denials or severe conditioning of projects because of the presumptive need for affordable housing. That's the reality of 40B. I would be lying to you if I told you anything to the contrary. So I try to be frank and make municipalities aware that 40B is all that it's cracked up to be, all that you read about. It's challenging, and if you wish to outright deny a project, you've got to be prepared to justify that denial. With that said, the Housing Appeals Committee's discretion, jurisdiction, does have certain limitations, and one of those limitations is modifying contractual obligations. Past history does play a role, whether you've had a past history of providing for, again, we'll go to the example of water or sewer, in another community, whether you provided it to other households in that other community, and whether that establishes a precedent for what you're obligated to do moving forward. So there are a number of questions that are raised in this context, probably far beyond the scope of a discussion tonight, but I have done additional research even since we last met. Very little, very few cases out there that address it head-on, but I think we can gather information from those cases and get a bit of a sense, in our case, without getting into the particulars of what's before you, what Maynard's obligations are, if any, what Acton's obligations are, if any, and how you can use those obligations or lack of obligations as a bargaining chip.
Just an observation on past practice. Yeah, we have one-offs where there are a few houses on the stow line where sewer has been added. The one time that this community had an opportunity to allow sewer to be accessible to a major project in another town, it was overwhelmingly rejected. That's past practice.
Right. There's also something to be said for the availability of capacity for the strains that use of a system might place on your community. There's a fair amount of case law, not involving projects that are along municipal boundaries, but projects that are wholly within communities, that addresses, you know, when is a community obligated to provide water and sewer service? If it's already, if its system is already taxed, is it required to extend its system? Is it required to provide a connection or service, a tie-in? Again, there's plenty of case law that address those issues, and they're really been taken up, even those issues, on a case-by-case basis, depending upon the particulars of the situation that's been before the Housing Appeals Committee. There are some guidelines certainly that exist, but it's very much an ad hoc determination based upon, you know, all of the factors that come to play.
I have a question about timeline. So obviously you said there's no clocking, like ticking clock of 30 or 60 days, but I think at some point we risk exposure of not responding or letting this hang in space, and the risk of an unfriendly development process. So how much time do you think we have before we have to kind of address this head-on without that risk?
Sure. So it's hard to give a specific deadline. It's hard for me to say, "You've got 60 days," or "You've got 120 days." What I will say is that through my involvement, and certainly your staff has had greater involvement, day-to-day, week-to-week, than I have with this project or with this applicant. But I've had a series of conversations with the proponents when I was at your last meeting, just outside the meeting room. I've had many conversations with their council, who I know from past cases I've had and work I've done in other communities. And so the lines of communication have been open. So I don't think that it would be a circumstance where suddenly you'd be surprised by receiving notice that there's been an application made to one of the unfriendly subsidies, like Mass Housing, and you're suddenly put on notice that you're within your 30-day common period, and the applicant has gone the more traditional or the unfriendly route. I think that because that communication has been open throughout the process that has existed so far, that you would receive adequate notice before they were to go. That's my sense of it, anyway. But I think you're right, that there is certainly the risk of some exposure if you decide to simply say, you know, "We've got no deadline, so we're going to take our time here. If it takes us six months to get through this process and feel comfortable with it, we're going to take the full six months." You're not really driving the bus in that respect. They can decide at any time that they want to go the more traditional route. But there also has to be something in it, I think, for the town to opt to go the LIP process. Why go the LIP process versus going the traditional? We talked about that before. Well, because the LIP process generally offers some benefits to a municipality, some opportunity for you to try and shape a project, potentially negotiate something like a development agreement to get some assurances upfront that might be harder to get during the zoning board of appeals review process, because that process is very restricted as to scope. Well, if those concessions aren't coming, if there's not a deal to be made, if you don't feel that you're getting the feedback that you need, the responsiveness, if you're not shaping the project the way that you hope to shape it through the LIP process, then really what's in it for you going the LIP route? Just tell the developer to go the more traditional route. So it is sort of a balancing act here, where yes, on the one hand, you want to be mindful of the timeline, but on the other hand, you want to be making some progress and feel that there's something in it for you to buy into this whole concept of a LIP versus a more traditional 40B.
So for my clarification purposes, if the developer decides to go the unfriendly route or the traditional route, can they force our town to give them, to provide sewer?
So the question of capacity, the question of providing sewer for a project that is partly located in another community, that exists whether or not this is a friendly or an unfriendly project, whether or not it's a local initiative program, a LIP project, or it's a traditional Chapter 40B project. The only difference between the two, or the chief difference between the two, is that the LIP process is front-loaded. None of what is occurring now would occur if this were not a LIP project, or were not being proposed as a LIP project. The applicant would simply go to a subsidy, like Mass Housing, or Mass Housing Partnership Fund, would make an application for subsidy preliminary approval, and would make an application to the zoning board of appeal once it has received that preliminary letter of eligibility. With the LIP process, they come to you first and they say, "We want to work cooperatively. We like your feedback. We're willing to negotiate a development agreement. We're willing to work on the particulars of the project even before we go to the subsidy, even before we go to the ZBA." But the question of things like capacity, although you could address them in the context of a development agreement, really are within the purview of the zoning board of appeals as part of the approval process, and that process exists no matter friendly 40B or unfriendly 40B. That's the requisite part of the process. That's really what the public often takes issue with at this stage. They come to you, and maybe you'll hear this in comments tonight if there are any, and they say, "Aren't you fast-tracking this? How can this already be this far along? We hear that there's discussions being had by municipal staff." This is typical. This occurs in all communities where there's a LIP proposal made. There will be not only an opportunity for public comment, I presume, through this process before your board, but there is required notice under the ZBA process to a butters, a butters to a butters within 300 feet, the standard notice that there would be for any ZBA proceeding, published notice, and there is going to be a series of hearings if this project proceeds before the ZBA, when they will apply the comprehensive permit standards, and they will review all aspects of the project, everything from those sorts of resources, the availability of water, sewer, to the civil engineering of the site, to any environmental issues that exist, to the architecture of the site, to public health issues, public safety concerns, traffic. All of that gets reviewed through the ZBA process, whether this is a traditional 40B or a friendly 40B.
No, I understand that part, but I don't think you answered the question that I asked. Could they force you to provide sewer?
They can't necessarily force the town to provide sewer. That's sort of the question that I was hesitant to give a yes-or-no answer to, because it's not quite that simple. I thought you were drawing a distinction between a traditional and a friendly. In either event, they may attempt to force the town to provide sewer. I don't think it's that simple, knowing what I know about the relationship between Maynard and Acton, knowing what I know about your sewer system. I think there are arguments that could be made in this case by the applicant that you're required to provide the sewer. I think that there are counter-arguments to be made as well.
In the scenario that you presented, you said, "Oh, the ZBA can have the decision-making process relative to sewer." Quite honestly, this board is the only authority within Maynard that has authority over water and sewer. The ZBA has zero authority for water and sewer. They cannot authorize anybody to give away our precious resource, and I wouldn't expect that they would. So this board, this is just me now speaking off the record, but, on the record, but off the record of the issue. This board needs to address, with our community, the issue of whether or not we want to get into the business of selling our precious resource to another town for their benefit.
Sure. So let me offer a point of clarity, and I hope I didn't misspeak, but when a project is reviewed by a zoning board of appeals, the project plans are reviewed, full scope, civil engineering. So to the extent that there is going to be a sewer connection, the particulars of that sewer connection is reviewed by the ZBA. sewer connection is reviewed by the ZBA under the comprehensive permit process, because it's one-stop shopping for an applicant. I would agree with you that with respect to capacity, and I'll review the interplay between your typical jurisdiction for the average project as a Board of Selectmen versus the jurisdiction of the zoning Board of Appeals, but I tend to agree with you that in most communities, the authority that exists in the selectmen or in a Board of Water or Sewer Commissioners remains their authority with respect to the ability to utilize the capacity that exists if there is excess capacity that exists. So it's a bit of an interplay in the sense that the ZBA reviews project plans and ultimately approves things like the ability to connect to the system. But in terms of providing the actual resource, that is something over which the selectmen would have say. Certainly, you'd have say anyway in the LIP process, because you could incorporate that into, which I did say, part of the negotiation of something like a development agreement.
It's critical to this particular project, because prior to submission of any reports, we heard twice from their presenter that there was no way that Acton could provide the sewer. So if Maynard doesn't provide the sewer, there's no project. Now, I'm not opposed to affordable housing, I'm not opposed to 40B. I've been heavily favorable to a lot of affordable units that unfortunately I haven't necessarily gotten the support along the way that I thought that I should have gotten along those, in those arguments. But this issue is more, from my perspective, of a sewer issue than any 40B issue. Yeah, there's a whole issue that I'm very concerned about with density and everything else relative to the project, and when you look at how Acton gets favorable treatment on density. But this, from my perspective, and I think from the public's perspective, is an issue of sewer, not an issue of whether or not we want affordable housing.
Sure.
Anything else along those lines? Anybody? Okay. So we have the MOA, and we have the LIP, and you're going to, and Greg is going to have the various department heads review the LIP for their comments back to us. And the MOA, I would assume that everybody on this board should be reading that, and we'll have our own comments for that, and we'd have comments back, I would assume, from the department heads on the MOA as well. And we'll schedule that. When that's going to take place, we'll do our schedule later in the meeting. But other than that, does anyone have any other questions?
One other comment, Chris. One of the emails that we got, and you mentioned it earlier, I think any communication with the town of Acton on this project that is done with anybody on official capacity on their Board of Selectmen, their water commissioner or whatever, should be done in an open meeting with the full Board of Selectmen of both sides, nothing done behind, even though, no disrespect to anybody, but there should not be any communication with another community about our resources without it being public for the residents.
There's been no communication with any community about our resources since I've been involved with this project.
I'm not, I didn't say there was.
I'm not defense. I'm telling you, I'm telling you the fact, there has been none.
I understand that.
The insinuation and suggestion that has been constant, that there's been something underbored, underhanded, you know, behind the scenes taking place, is crap. It hasn't happened. It has not happened. You have one instance where you could suggest that you know it's happened? Then save it, because it's nonsense. It's been above board, it's been open, it's been all the things it's supposed to be.
All I'm asking for is going forward, that everything be in open meetings. Are you opposed to open meetings?
No, I'm not opposed to an open meeting.
David, it's so crappy.
The constant suggestion that there has been some, something that has taken place because the public is here, that this has happened, and has something's happened outside of the public, outside of a public meeting or anything else, is nonsense. Stop suggesting it. It hasn't happened.
I didn't suggest it.
No, you insinuated, and that's really, really crappy, David.
I said we should have open meetings.
So just for the record, David, there have been no meetings. There has been nothing offered to the town of Acton. There's been nothing asked from the town of Acton. The town of Acton knows less about this project as of yesterday than the town of Maynard does, okay? That's directly from their town administrator and their chairman of the selectmen, who were just seeing some of this stuff for the very first time, even reference of it, okay? So the nonsense that you continue to perpetuate about things being done behind closed doors is garbage. Save it, because I'm sick of listening to it.
Once again, I did not make that suggestion.
Enough.
What I said is that going forward, everything should be open, and I think the public would agree.
Enough. We're on to the next topic. Acceptance of minutes. Move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of July 17th, 2018, as shown. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion about the minutes of July 31st, 2018? All those in favor? Thank you. Correspondence items. Move to accept and approve correspondences A through F, as shown. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, so we have A through F. Does anybody have any comments on A through F? In this, in this, there's been a discussion about the Asbury River Rail Trail ribbon-cutting on August 10th. Do any of you guys anticipate being there on August 10th or 12th?
I'll be there, too.
I should be able to be there, too.
I plan on being there.
Who's riding their bike?
You are.
I'm riding a tricycle, is that right?
Yeah, riding bikes.
You're riding to work that day, right?
All right.
Won't be ready.
So we anticipate the full board being there for this.
Fantastic. I'll be there, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay. That's great. So, let's see. Thank you to Brett Matheson for his time as a member of our planning board. He was there through some bumping in projects. Also, thank you to Chris Worthy, who resigned as a member of the Board of Assessors. And then thank you to those who are being appointed through this, through the correspondence or consent agendas tonight. Do we have any other comments on the correspondences? All those in favor? Thank you. Seven. Consent agenda. Consent agenda, move to accept and approve consent agenda items A through F, as shown. Do I have a second? Does anybody have any comments on any of the consent items, A through F? Thank you to, thank you to Mr. Coleman for volunteering to become a full-time member of the planning board. Mr. Coleman is here, so, Jim, thank you.
He just slipped out. Oh, he's in the back. Oh, there he goes. Oh, there you are. All right, Jim.
And then also, we're reappointing Andrew Demore to the planning board. Andrew's term expires June 30th, 2021, and Mr. Coleman's term expires June 30th, 2020. Asher's here from the, does anybody have any questions about the Battle Road parking lot permit for Oktoberfest? I guess it's changed, the fireworks and the Oktoberfest are going to be the same night now, they kind of sync together. So thank you guys for changing your date for our, town's benefit. And then there's a one-day beer and wine permit for family, David and Maynard, it's on September 15th.
Just a question, is the Oktoberfest going to be on the Main Street side of the, no, it's going to be over on the Battle Road side?
Yeah, the building five parking lot.
Okay.
Where it was last year.
I didn't know we had an annual back-to-school picnic, by the way. I did not know about that.
Yes.
Did you know?
No.
I never heard of it before.
You haven't been at school?
Huh?
Wow, since you were at school.
Was that, what are you doing? Did you do that in a week?
Yeah.
Does everybody know Greg Johnson, our new town administrator? Welcome, Greg. Haven't picked on him enough yet.
All right.
So anybody have any other comments on the consent items? All right, all those in favor? Thank you, all. Next up. Let's have fun with marijuana. Marijuana regulations, hombre.
Here she is.
And here's, this is Kate Federoff, another member of our town council.
Welcome back.
Welcome back.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you for all the work with contract and everything else that we went through.
Oh, you're welcome.
We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And I guess we're going to talk about, I don't know, what we're required to do in terms of a application process for marijuana?
Yeah, so I think it's important to kind of set the stage of where we've been, so we can get to where we're going. So as you recall, at the town meeting in the springtime, we passed two bylaws. One was a licensing bylaw for the Board of Selectmen, and the other was a zoning amendment. So put the zoning amendment aside, that gives the planning board special, they're the special permit granting authority, put that aside for the time being. And I think we focus on tonight what your job as members of the Board of Selectmen are under the bylaw for licensing. So that particular bylaw empowered you to promulgate regulations surrounding the licensure of marijuana establishments, and I liken it to your authority under Chapter 138 relative to liquor licenses. So the first step that we should talk about is what types of regulations and rules you want to implement. So I prepared draft regulations, and they're just based on your alcohol licensure regulations, modified to some degree, to be more appropriate to marijuana establishments. But you might want to walk through those rules to see what you think is appropriate, what you want as a policy for the town, and if there are additions that you want. You can draw, I drew, rather, from the CCC regs in part, so some of it is duplicative of what the state will require, for example, in signage. You may not want to have that oversight while the state has the same oversight, you know? It empowers you to say, okay, listen, you're in violation of the sign regulations, so as a consequence, we're bringing you in for a hearing. But you might want to leave that to the state to regulate, because you don't feel it's in your purview, or you're competent, or whatever, to deal with that particular issue. Another thing that you want to really consider is whether or not you want to regulate the hours of operation. So under the planning board special permit, there, the zoning bylaw says essentially that they may establish the hours of operation, but it doesn't say shall. So it could be something that the Board of Selectmen assumes as the licensing authority to decide what hours of operation are appropriate for any particular establishment. And you know that also with your liquor licenses, your bars and your package stores, that you may have a better familiarity than perhaps the planning board with what would be appropriate for the town, and you also have the ability, under the licensure bylaw, to bring them back in for a hearing, and perhaps adjust their hours in an easier way than the planning board might. So it's an area that you might want to consider. So I'm not sure if you all had the chance to review those rules before the meeting tonight, or are there any particular concerns that you want to discuss?
Particularly, we've talked about this one before, and that is, because I'm troubled with liquor licenses transferring, and I'm also troubled with them becoming commodities. I don't know if we have any control over the commodity issue, where, you know, they get sold to the highest bidder, and before you know it, something that they paid $125 from the town for, they're getting $10,000 or $90,000 in some instances for the liquor license. But you did have in there with a question mark about whether or not we wished to have transfer of licenses.
Yeah.
And I personally would, especially until we have a better understanding of the Commonwealth's, the entirety of the law, and the entirety of the way this industry works, I would prefer not to allow any transfer of license at all.
Okay, so we can...
You know, that's just me, obviously, it's the board's ultimate decision, but...
Do you all need to sign some of these?
Pardon?
You all need to sign.
Oh, oh, sorry. Okay.
Oh, they do, okay.
No, I agree. I agree with David. I don't think we need to be transferring these licenses as freely as we transfer some of the liquor licenses in town.
Yeah, and that's why I highlighted it as a question, because it's definitely something that I think other towns have expressed concern about. Some towns want to make it transferable, because, for example, the corporate structure could change. I don't know what it's called, Marijuana LLC, and it turns into another, I'm not very creative with a name, but I would say something embarrassing on television, so, in any event, change their corporate name, and so you would allow, or they get purchased, or whatever. So they wanted to allow that flexibility. But that said, easy fix, every applicant has to come in with a new application, and whatever asset purchase they do in the background is separate and apart from the town's approval, you have to come in with a new application. So I'll make that note.
Do we know if there's going to be a standard fee, or is that something that can be set by the community?
So that is set by the community, but remember, so you're bound by case law, which suggests that the fee has to relate to the actual cost that's incurred, otherwise it's an illegal tax, right? So you wouldn't want to set an exorbitant fee for a license hearing when you know that, you know, it's going to cost half-time, a certain amount of effort, and that kind of thing. You don't want to make it exorbitant. And as a matter of sheer fact, the CCC just recently came out with draft guidance regarding fees that can be imposed by municipalities, and they're taking a strong look at it to say, listen, communities, the whole reason why we set a relatively low tax rate on marijuana and allowed only a 3% local tax rate and capped community impact fees was we wanted to encourage the recreational market so as to try to dry up the black market. So they want to make the costs not prohibited, prohibitive, for people to enter the market. So that's why you want to be really cautious about what fees you set.
So would it be like, was there justification to make it more than your town's liquor license cost in any way, in your eyes, based on what you're seeing?
So, I mean, the distinction, I guess, would be with what kind of review is going to be undertaken. So perhaps, I'm not sure if your liquor license review process involves the police chief, or, I'm sure it does to a certain extent, the fire chief, I don't know if it follows through that review. If there's greater administrative oversight, there could be certainly justification. But you're not, if your liquor license fee is $100, you're not going to make your fee for marijuana establishments $10,000, you know? It has to be reasonably related to the cost. So perhaps because it's a newer industry, and you would like more input from some of the departments than you would normally under a typical liquor license application that you're super familiar with, you can justify a greater expense.
Okay. Do the people that work in the facilities and own the facilities have to be TIPS certified, too, as part of the process?
So the CCC regs require training, but it's not the same as TIPS, and I think I may have even put in TIPS training, because I think it's, I don't know, I think it makes sense to be able to take a look at a license and really figure out if it's a fake license or whatever. So I think that makes sense, but they have other training, and it's really for trying to detect whether or not a person's impaired, you know, other sorts of, also management of the facility, because you have cleanliness issues that you don't necessarily have with sealed alcohol containers, you know, and things like that. So they, the CCC has indicated that they're going to wrap their arms around that a little more carefully, but they don't have a firm plan at this point. So I think the way I worded it in our regulations, I worded it that they would be required for TIPS training as well as any additional training required by the CCC. And I imagine they're going to implement a program at that level.
Okay. I had another question about licensing, too. So if someone were to apply to the Board of Selectmen and say, for instance, they want to be a testing facility or grow facility, and we issue a license, and down the road they later decide that they, you know, got a license from the state, and they want to be a dispensary now with a storefront at the same location, is that encompassing the license we already issued, or would they come back to then seek? is that encompassing the license we already issued or would they come back to then seek further approval?
Yeah, so they would have to come back to you for further approval. Well, you could have it either as a new application or a modification of their existing license. But again, the, the, it would have to be fully vetted because obviously the retail component is a lot different than the manufacturer cultivation component.
And is that vetting, in that circumstances that Melissa just described, would have to go to the state level for review?
I'm sorry, I will stop asking questions soon, but I'm just like confused on how this process is going to work. So in terms of law enforcement on the town side, how are we going to approach, or how is the state approaching as a whole OUIs? Because it's a measurable difference than, you know, a breathalyzer for alcohol and creating a safe community.
This is another tricky issue and I think your police force is going to have to undergo some significant training on this issue. Naturally, they already have detection ability because people smoked marijuana and drove in their car when it was illegal. So they had, they had to be able to, to detect it. But the difference is here, in that circumstance, it was often that there might have been reasonable suspicion, right? To pull someone over and then they see there's marijuana in the car. But you don't have that safe opportunity anymore because it's legal. So seeing the marijuana in the car doesn't give them probable cause to think anything, but they have some legal marijuana. So it, it, it's not, I think, something that's been scientifically shown to be able to detect very easily. And they're working on certain measures. But I think those same, and probably your police chief could speak more clearly to this, but the same, what is it? ATS? Exactly, exactly. You can still use those kinds of tests, but obviously there isn't the simple approach of a breathalyzer.
And who knows what level of intoxication is actually intoxicating?
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
Can I ask a question?
Okay.
Yeah.
So I have a question about how many licenses. I know I don't think that's in here, but I know, I think that the CCC was talking about the possibility of doing 20% of, of the town allowing 20% of the retail liquor licenses.
Yep.
So that is just package store liquor license, correct?
So let me clarify what the law actually says. It doesn't automatically put a cap of 20%.
Yeah.
What it said was if the town wants to, if it was a yes town.
Yep.
And the town wanted to limit the number to below 20%, you had to go that two-pronged approach of the bylaw and the ballot measure. So the anything above 20% could be regulated by bylaw through the town. But it has to be spelled out in your bylaw and I think that was not part of your general bylaw. But let me look really quickly because I've got the warrant here. Yeah, no, there's no limitation. So what some towns did, and you could think about this for maybe the next special town meeting to amend it, if you're interested in putting a cap on it, is some towns said, okay, who were yes towns? A no town could do whatever they wanted. But a yes town said, okay, we're going to limit the retailers to 20% rounded up. So then they've met that threshold of, of having that minimum amount that doesn't trigger the ballot.
Okay.
So, or you could do 21% or whatever.
And then the other question I had, and I know I emailed you this question before, but I want to push a little bit harder on it.
Yeah.
Is the possibility of somehow limiting or limiting some of the sales of some of the edibles? Namely, I would say gummies.
Yep.
In town. And I just, I'm wondering if there's any way where we've, where there's bylaws or there's state laws or whatever that limit, you know, that they could, that, that, you know, convenience stores can't sell flavored rolling papers and things like that because it, it can appeal to kids.
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering why, what makes gummies different than that type of thing?
Yeah, so as a, as, as an initial matter, all the edibles are really heavily regulated in terms of labeling. And they're meant not to be in the shape of something that would be attractive to children. And, and that's all done by the CCC regs.
Right.
So first thing. Second thing, and it, and it's a terrible answer and I'm apologizing in advance for giving it, but there's no clear answer on whether or not a town can say, hey, look, we're not allowing a brownie because kids, kids don't like it. I mean, kids may be attracted to it rather. So there's, there's nothing that says a town can't prohibit it in the legislation or in the CCC regs. That being said, what the legislation does say is you can't be unreasonably impractical. And my understanding is because of the negative effects of smoking or the perceived negative effects of smoking marijuana, the edibles are actually quite attractive to folks who don't want to have those side effects. So there's a huge amount of money in the edibles and the oils that are consumed. So could someone make an argument that that regulation that's imposed by the town of Maynard to prohibit edibles or prohibit a certain amount of, or a certain type of edibles is unreasonably impractical? Could be, but again, this is untested waters and we don't even have any cases to, to guide us as to what the outside limits could be. So depends how risk averse you are.
The packaging is totally different.
Well, it's, yeah, and my, my concern is not the packaging. My concern honestly is that, and, and I understand, I've done a little bit of research on it. I know that they're geometric shapes as opposed to bears or, or whatever, or worms. But it really is my concern of it getting in the hands of kids. I realize that someone over 21 has to buy it. I understand, you know, whatever. And I'm not, I'm more concerned of like the middle school, high school set that may know or may not know that that's what they're getting.
Yeah.
You know, and, and that's why brownies and cookies, for some reason, that's a better avenue for me than the gummies. I don't know why, but I feel like, you know, so the candy part speaks more strongly to me than-
Yeah, and I could see, I mean, just the fact that it's super easy to ingest it, you know, that even, forget about your high schoolers or, or even your junior high kids who may go into it eyes wide open, not knowing the consequences, but go into it eyes wide open as the younger kids who may get their hands on something that's easily consumed. I mean, it's much more difficult for, for a toddler to roll something up and smoke it than it is for them to pop in a brownie, right? So that's the, that's the real risk. I think in terms of being attractive to kids from the retail perspective as opposed to what's in someone's home already is, is really heavily regulated and monitored just to combat that, that negative impact for sure. But you're right. I mean, it's a, it's a valid point.
I think that's all I have today.
So in 7.6, I'm still a little confused on the hours of operation because I know we talked about this at a prior meeting. It still reads to me like they can't be operational on a Saturday, which is the same problem we have with our liquor license, but just because we're creating a whole new agreement here.
Yeah.
I don't know if we, there's a way we could change the wording?
So, and I, I just left it as is and I'm waiting for your comments because I don't know. Some people only want a retailer to be open till 8 o'clock and others say, you know, I want to treat this exactly like a package store for alcohol and I want it open till 11 o'clock because-
What I think that Melissa's alluding to is that it said weekdays and we don't traditionally see Saturday as a weekday. But I think that the alcohol laws we read, it's the same, it's written the same way.
Monday through Saturday, that's the weekdays, that's how they class it.
But we can clarify it to say Monday through Sunday or something like that. That would be super easy to clarify and I-
I hadn't even noticed the hours. I mean, I was just focusing on that. And I don't have an issue if people want to change the hours too.
Right.
I don't know if there's, if you've noticed what other towns are doing, what is reasonable.
So-
I mean, 8:00 AM seems a little early to go-
To be honest, you're, you're ahead of the game compared to a lot of other towns. A lot of towns have their bylaws in place, but they haven't yet promulgated their regulations. So when they're, you're in the same boat. I think it really just depends upon, and, and the other interesting piece is how radically different each town is in terms of appetite. So there are folks who are really excited to have marijuana retailers come into their town and there are folks who are really hesitant, and those who prohibited, put those in a different category. But then really anxious about what the actual impacts are going to be. So those are the, the communities that are going to try to tailor the hours to be a little bit more limited. So I will absolutely change the, the language on the weekdays to be Monday through Sunday, if that's what you want.
No, no, Monday to Friday.
Monday through Saturday, which it says 11:00, 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And then Sunday, 12 to 9, 12 noon to 9:00 PM.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is what, is I think what we were looking at. Difference in 7.6.
7.6.
I don't know, does everybody, does anybody have any, any other issues with the, aside from the fact that we'd like to have a more stringent license transfer policy in regards to marijuana than liquor? Is there anything else other than that in the hours that anybody has a concern? And the fact that just, just, just he just doesn't like gummies?
The, the two businesses that have been apparently showing interest in Maynard, do you happen to know from what you know of them, if they've gotten approval at the state level where?
So, so just to be clear, so at the, to file at the state, you have to have an application of intent. That's the first step at the CCC level. And prior to filing an application of intent, you need the host community agreement executed by the town because the town submits, essentially signs off a one-page certificate.
So they can't even go to the state until?
They can't, you, they've got to get through you first before they can even do the preliminary application. And they have to have the host community meeting as well, informational meeting for the folks to come in and, and hear their presentation.
That gets to the second point. Chris, you can go ahead.
No, I'm just, I don't know if we're going in the same place. So we need to develop what our HCA is going to be.
That was my question.
Right, so we need, we don't, we don't have that.
Yep.
And then, and then we need a, a, we need to finish going through these regulations and just everybody kind of read them and, you know, approve or disapprove them. And then the special permit by Planning Board, they've, they've done that. They've given that to us and we voted on approve that, right?
You approved the special permit? No, because the Planning Board's a special permit granting authority. So they would have to file us-
Did we approve what they gave us though?
I'd have to check.
Or accept, vote to accept what they gave us?
I can find out.
For the, for the warrant, we did for-
Oh, yeah, for the warrant. You've established your zoning. They'll have to go through the Planning Board process, but-
Right.
So, so let me tell you a couple of things about steps too. Because some communities have said, okay, I had one community that said this and they actually walked back from it. They said they wanted, before they executed the host community agreement with the Board of Selectmen, the board required them to have their, all of their local permits in place. So if Board of Health has, has jurisdiction, if they've established regulations for, for permits by the Board of Health, their Planning Board and their licensure through the Board of Selectmen. They said, we want all of those things done before we even want to sit down with you because we want this, we want to go into the host community agreement with eyes wide open to see what kinds of questions were raised by these boards. It seemed really actually logical to me to do that. That said, they, they got such pushback from the marijuana establishments because the marijuana establishments want to see what the financials are going to look. So they are confident that they can put an application before the Planning Board which is consistent and compliant with the zoning regs because they've taken a look at it. But what the unknown factor exists, the unknown factor existed as to what were the demands the Board of Selectmen were going to impose on them in terms of the impact fee. Because for example, your cultivators are going to say the impacts are much less than your retailers. So they're going to try to ratchet down that max 3% impact fee payment from the 3%. So they wanted to get their hands on that before they invested in the whole local permitting process. So, so the town that, that opted to do, to require that actually walked back from it and allowed simultaneous applications. So, and in terms of, in terms of the CCC application of intent, they need to have the ability to show that they will satisfy the special permit process through zoning at the local level, but they don't need to have that permit in hand. So they need the HCA from you before filing that application of intent and they need the community outreach meeting and they need to show, be able to demonstrate that they can and will be able to satisfy and obtain those other, satisfy the criteria and obtain those other licenses. So it's, it's really a-
So as David, as David indicated, we have two parties that have expressed an interest in opening a facility in Maynard. What criteria do we use, what criteria can we use to determine which of the two? If we only decided to license one, what's the criteria that we would use to determine which one of the two we would do business with so as to not get ourselves into trouble with the second party?
So, I mean, every applicant that comes before you is entitled to due process, right? And your bylaw doesn't have a number restriction. So you have to look at every application critically on its face to see, is it an acceptable applicant? So are they able to withstand the query requirements of the state? And, and those differ from when you query your alcohol licenses because built into the legislation is that they can be convicted of marijuana offenses provided it's not distribution or, or distributing to minors. But if they can satisfy that, which I'm, I'm pretty confident that they would be able to because they wouldn't appear before you if they couldn't. And they provide you sufficient assurance that they have a business plan in place which looks like it's going to be, it, it, it's crossed all its Ts and dotted all its Is. It has sufficient financing. It has a bond. So the CCC requires a bond in order to fund a dismantling of an operation. If it has insurance or alternatives to insurance. And you're comfortable with the payments based on the impacts you are anticipating for the, for the town. No one can force you to contract with a party, but if you as a Board of Selectmen are taking an applicant and not treating them fairly, they may have due process claims, right? So that's the bonds that you're saddled with.
For the HCA agreement, is this something that we would draft on an individual basis specific to the individual applicant? Or are you going to kind of put together a plug and play that we can use as we enter into an agreements with people?
So strangely enough, I've seen HCA, HCAs put together by, that I've put together, but also by other communities and they're all pretty similar. So, so it is pretty much a form, although if there's a particular concern that the town has, you just build it right in. So one town, I have a town that has competing applications and they do have a bylaw in place that limits the number. And so we're building in a provision in the agreement that says, okay, it's, it goes to, by us executing this HCA, we're not obliged to allow you to operate in the town. It's first come, first served. Whoever gets permitted first, so they're scrambling, right? So individual things like that will just build into the agreement. The, the most common kind of provisions are a preference for residents and hiring. You have to, you have to put a caveat on that, that it can't, it can't prevent them from hiring competent people, but they have to give preference to residents. That's a common one. Your community impact fee, however that's negotiated. You have a revocation if they fail to comply with their terms of their special permit or their licensure with the, with the Board of Selectmen or their licensure with the Board of Health. So those kinds of provisions.
In terms of capping facilities, do we have the ability to cap dispensaries without capping other marijuana-related industries? I, I would think that the impact on the town would be less for, you know, a grow facility and internal commercial space than it does for a storefront.
Yeah, so the legislation doesn't speak to whether or not there can be a cap. So I would say you can have a cap. That being said, even the community- That being said, even the communities who are anxious about marijuana, a lot of them are receptive to the cultivation facilities with no retail and the manufacturing facilities with no retail because they're kind of just passive, you know? So, um, so I haven't seen a community that, that has passed that, let's put it that way. But there's nothing that prevents you from doing that.
Okay.
Are the, first off, I, I always figured that cultivation places always wanted to have retail sales there too, but I guess maybe not. But would the, um, host agreement be tailored also differently if it's just a cultivation versus a, um, you know, a retail?
Yeah, because, absolutely, because the impacts are, are much different, right? So, and you would build that into the agreement to say, this is what we've agreed to. We've agreed to the cultivation. We haven't agreed to anything else. So then if they were to come back to you and say, we want to make a modification. We have a different idea of where we wanna go, they would have to renegotiate with you a new H C. A. And remember, at the state level too, it's different licensures as well. So a retailer isn't necessarily a, um, a cultivator. Unlike the, um, medical side, it had to be vertically integrated. So it may not have been in the town of Maynard that they had all, um, types of uses. But that entity had a dispensary component as well as a cultivation. But that doesn't exist in this recreational law because there are folks who just want to get into the resale side because they're not farmer slash scientists or, or whatever you have to be to qualify yourself as a cultivator. Um, but they are interested in the retail side. So, and vice versa. Other folks don't want to deal with the retail component because of all the complications that go along with that. Yep.
What is the, um, in, in our agenda, it mentions a community outreach meeting. What does that consist of? It says no approval, just need to show that it happened prior to filing an application for intent.
Yeah, so it's essentially?
Us or them?
It's them. They, they have to advertise and hold a, a public meeting where they essentially present their, their development proposal. They talk to the community about their concerns and there's, it's, it's more of an information session so that, that the folks who are maybe neighbors or just interested are, are equipped with the information.
So for these people that are interested, that's really their next step, right? Like in addition to, like they have to apply formally? Like not just send a letter to the town and they have to hold some kind of public meeting and then based on our answer, go to the state?
So because the policy isn't so clear in the town of Maynard of what the process would be, I think they're, they're asking essentially, how do we get on your agenda? How can we approach you? Do you have an application form? So for the licensure, we're going to, on top of figuring out what exactly needs to go in these rules, we're gonna have to put together an application form. For?
That's drafted.
Oh, that's, see, Becky's already got it.
You said to draft it yesterday.
She's, she's hot ticket, this one. So?
I would care of the big one.
The host community agreement, you could say, you could establish a protocol to say, the first step is to file a notice of intent with the Board of Selectmen and then you have so many meetings to get us on the agenda. And you can maybe set up a subcommittee to negotiate some of the terms. Or, or however you want to do it, but kinda lay out the framework for them so they know what they should file. Because we already have seen, I know for sure, we saw the, is it Wellspring?
Wellspring.
Wellspring? The Wellspring?
And Green Star.
And Green Star, okay. Um, I, I've seen the Well, the Wellspring, um, H C. A. So I think they're sort of in limbo of how can we approach you? Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Mr. Chairman. I get excited.
In, in addition, I called the insurance company on the town's behalf today. So they wanna come in on the fourteenth in the morning and talk to us about how our loss control, if something kicked back. Uh, because this is brand new, so Maya wants to come in and?
Loss control when we got to marijuana?
Uh, well, the loss control, if one of the establishments turns around, if a claim happens, you know, how they can protect the town.
So we haven't gotten any real feedback as to how that will affect premium?
Insurance companies still don't really know how to insure it and what the bonds or if there should be like, um, for class, for vehicles, there's a class, a surety bond and that's a twenty-five thousand dollar bond on top of having, say, a car dealer's license. Um, so they don't know if they're gonna do that type of piece for the marijuana. So the insurance companies are all talking, so we kinda need to know that.
Yeah, I don't know why?
So I know what I'm accepting from a client for you.
Oh, I'd love to, if you could loop me in on a call. Because I don't know why the town would be facing liability unless you were to. So the only thing I could possibly think of is like, um, station fire in Rhode Island where they improperly permitted, uh, the club where there was the foam insulation or whatever that caught fire and it was, it was clear that they shouldn't have permitted it. Because you're just the permitting authority, you're not the actual proprietor, which is, which is good.
Yeah, the number of liquor licenses we have in town doesn't affect our, uh,
Yeah.
premium for insurance.
I'd be interested to see what they had to say though, for sure.
So we have to develop an H C. A., approve these regulations with the changes at some point soon? Develop an operating permit? And do we have, we do, we have any, do we have anything with the Board of Health? And what they do?
They have draft regulations.
They have their own draft regulations?
And I was telling, actually I was telling Becky today that, so the Board, the Boards of Health across the state have been adopting these, um, the, what is it? The Massachusetts Association of Boards of Health had, um, created sort of form regulations that they could adopt. And therefore your general sanitary stuff and also, I'm sorry, also, um, delivering to minors, things like that. Um, but in one community that has a cultivation facility, um, for the medical marijuana, they were really concerned with odor and noise. And so the Board of Health could consider promulgating regulations on those particular issues because apparently some of the marijuana establishments who had designed the facilities in Colorado are facing different environmental factors here which impact whether or not the odor is, is escaping from the building. So humidity exists here that doesn't exist in Colorado. And I think it has to do with elevation, but I'm not sure about that. But regardless, they, they actually felt the impact, so they wanted to regulate that more heavily. So it's something that, um, I can talk to your director about.
The health director provided their draft regulations to Kate a few months ago and they are in compliance with the state Boards of Health. Presenting to the Board, I believe in April or so, there was some concern that, um, they were overstepping what they could do as a Board of Health versus the local licensing authorities', uh, responsibilities. Uh, it was made clear, uh, through Kate, uh, that they're separate. They're not trying to control the licensing. It's a, a separate thing that they're doing like the way they, uh, inspect for health in restaurants and so on.
Yep, exactly. They have actually broad authority on the health and welfare side, so, um, but yeah. So, so yeah, step one is to really walk through these rules and regulations, see what you think is appropriate. You know, I put some things you may, may not like, you know, um, I think it all makes sense, actually. I, there was some stuff that I removed, actually Andrew and I talked about it too, which really related it from, from your alcohol by, uh, regulations. It was like, don't allow prostitution or lewd behaviors, things like that, which is more, um, a concern for onsite consumption facilities as opposed to your package stores. So, but you only have one set of regulations for your liquor licenses. So I removed that because I don't foresee that as being a problem. I left in illegal conduct because you don't want people smoking marijuana or consuming marijuana on the premises, which, um, wouldn't be appropriate or in the bathrooms or wherever. So I left that kind of, kind of stuff in there. But the signage, um, I pulled from the C C. C., so there's, I, I put it that at the point of sale that, um, there had to be signs which said, please consume responsibly. Um, you know, this is not safe for children or keep away from children, I forget exactly how it's worded. Um, all kinds of cautionary, um, signs. But you may think that's too aggressive, I'm not sure. So it's, it's really what you're, what you're feeling on the matter is. I just tried to give you some options that you could pull from.
Okay.
So Chris, do you wanna put a deadline to this or when do you want this?
No, I, I think, well, I don't need a deadline, but maybe, I think, next, the next, um, maybe we should put this, the regulations themselves and then the, the markup of the application that you've done on, or an H C. A. on the next agenda, just kinda walk through them and either we can, you know, agree we need to do some more work in them or approve what we think is complete and, and go with, you know, and put it on the next agenda. We have to, you know, it's time to do it, I guess, kinda pushing it off, but.
And I can get you, um, in advance of that meeting, I can put together something, uh, a, uh, like a list of things that you might wanna see for the H C. A.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Before you decide on that. So perhaps some of the components could be, what's your insurability? And they should know all of this stuff because they're preparing to submit to the state. So what's your insurability? The state's requiring them, I think, a million dollars per occurrence, two million dollars in the aggregate of insurance or a comparable alternative. What's your, what's your bond? What's your business plan? Give me all of those things, a, a security plan so that you can have all of that information when you're sitting down to think, do I wanna contract with these marijuana establishment or this marijuana establishment? Have they shown me that they're a responsible business owner? That kinda thing. Maybe you want bank statements or to funding sources or, or things of that nature. That would be important, important for the licensure component too. So you could say six to one, half dozen the other, I want it for the licensure or I want it for the H C. A. And you can cherry pick and, and maybe put a policy together to give them some guidance as to what they should provide you so that you can make a thoughtful decision.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that'd be very helpful.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Kate.
Well, thank you, Kate.
Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you.
I got nervous when Adam was here, I thought, oh.
Wrong guy, wrong place.
All right, so we do the, um, you wanna do the liaisons first, to go them in order?
Sure.
The liaisons, the, um, what's on the schedule? So the late? Liaison.
I got, is it all right if I have some preferences?
Sure.
Yeah. I know that some, some of us are already serving on committees and I don't know whether or not that's something that can change or?
No, so this is?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, but I mean, it's different, so it's not really a committee, it's, but it's, go ahead.
Yeah, the Economic Development Committee, I would have some interest in that.
Yeah, so we can have two liaisons too, we don't need to just?
Okay. Council of Aging, that's another one that I wouldn't mind serving on that liaison today.
Just so you know, we don't serve on these.
I know, yeah, I'm meaning that there's the liaison, yeah, go to some of the meetings.
You like getting anyone contacted.
Yeah, well, I already got contacted by once, it was kinda cool.
Okay, so yeah, so that's?
Council on Aging?
Yeah.
I did tonight too.
They're open meetings regardless, so if you show up, I'm, I'm sure your opinion would be valid.
Okay, that's fine. Anybody have any interest in being a, a liaison to the Board of Assessors?
I'll do it.
Okay.
Um, and I have school committee, but Justine and I had talked and she has an interest in doing that, so she's gonna take that over. So I'm happy to take one of the ones that Terrence or Cheryl don't have anymore. See Cheryl's on this list of ours.
Yeah, Cheryl's only on, very limited list.
I mean, I can take like Recreation Committee that Terrence had in exchange.
Do you wanna do the Recreation Committee only because you, I mean, Melissa's willing to, but I know you had some?
Oh, do you want it?
Conversations with?
Yeah, I'll, I'll do Recreation too.
I thought it would be?
I mean, we can have multiple people talking to the same people.
Yeah, I mean, go for it.
School, Recreation and Assessors.
Um, I, Cheryl and I were on the Master Plan Steering Committee, not like actually having seats, so she's gone. So I don't know if anyone else had?
I, I don't mind doing that.
Okay, there's an upcoming meeting, so I'll make sure Bill adds you to the list.
That'd be good. Yeah, I think Bill already sent me a copy.
That's actually a committee member.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's different, not a liaison, like we're actually on the committee.
Um, Andrew left, but, um, so I was talking to Justine earlier and she had asked about the, um, Capital Planning Committee, which is the Fire Chief, the police chief, Aaron and a couple of those. And, um, Justine was, had an interest in having a Selectman and/or a member of the Finance Committee be part of that committee or be a liaison to that committee type of thing. So, um, I don't know, we have to, you know, let's make sure that the committee has no objections and, you know, and make sure also, we should probably make sure that in the, um, you know, in the description of the committee, what the committee actually is, that there's no, um, nothing that prohibits a Selectman or a FinCom member from being on it.
True.
Some of them, they, they're very specific as to who can be on. But if, you know, if there's people willing to take part in those type of committees, we should allow them to take part in those type of committees.
It's true, but if you're, if you're the board that approves the charge of that committee, you can change the charge.
Yeah.
So I, I think, um, it's something I'm excited about looking into anyways. And, and I know that Justine showed interest as well. And I would encourage you, you're in, but as well for those projects.
The Fire Station Building Committee, I think it's the same as it's been. I think David and I are both on that committee itself, so we don't really need a liaison. Well, the capital planning is here on this list, way in the bottom.
Oh, is it on the debunk?
It's dormant.
Yep.
Okay.
I think it's being like resurrected though now, right?
I would?
Well, that's, the Capital Planning Committee is, it's, it used to be a citizen committee and then it evolved because citizens never showed up. So it evolved into being, um, the?
Good to know.
Department heads, basically.
Okay.
So I, I think it's critical to have a member of the Board of Selectmen on the Capital Planning Committee so we know what's being planned and what's being proposed. And then it may, you know, at least when they bring back, uh, if it's Justine, she brings back the, uh, you know, reflections of what's going on, it's not, well, you know, we've got this truck that we wanna buy. Well, the board may not think that the truck is really worthy of our consideration at that point. So I think it's, I think it's an important thing to have, to have some oversight.
Okay.
One thing that I don't see on this, maybe it is on there, but I don't see it. Um, I don't mind getting rid of some of these ones that I have, so go ahead and grab. But, um, the, um, the, the Budget Subcommittee, I would very much like to participate in again this year and I think it's important, it's, it's sort of a different situ, set situation because that's a actual, uh, committee that has to post and everything else. But I'd like to be a member of that committee again this year and work with the School Committee and the Finance Committee to, uh?
Does the School Committee decide who their chair is now?
Uh, they had their meeting last week, so I'm assuming?
Same chair as last year.
Same chair?
Oh, is it?
Justin or Dawn?
Justin.
Justin.
The chair and, uh, Dawn is the?
So who was on, who was on that meeting last year? Mary Murch?
Mary, Mary.
And Mary Bradley.
Mary, Mary, David?
Bethany.
And Cheryl. And then we had, uh, FinCom had, um?
Ken, right?
No, Ken showed up. Well, see, yeah, Ken was on it and then, um, what's her name? Um, younger girl, younger woman, um?
Megan?
No.
Gillian.
Yes, Gillian.
Gillian, right.
All right, well, do you want, I, I don't know, do you wanna?
These other ones weren't on the list.
Should we talk to, uh, who's, who's the new chair on the FinCom?
It's Justin, I, I can send Justin an email just on a?
Ken is the new chair of the FinCom?
He's still the chair. We got voted in again.
Yeah.
Oh, he replaced?
He replaced Dawn when Dawn left and then he stayed on for this new chair.
All right, well, I, I mean, I know we talked about that and getting that started a lot earlier with your last year just for the purposes of having more impact, so?
I agree.
We'll, 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 we'll get that done.
There's a bunch of these that weren't on the list last year.
Does anybody else wanna, does anybody else wanna take in that, um, Subcommittee with David and the, the other representatives?
I will.
That used to be in association with the Public Works, whatever it was called at the time. What did we have back when we had an elected board, or, what was that called, Bill? Public Works Advisory? Public Works, Public Works Advisory.
Who was a liaison to the Police, to Police Department? I don't see that on here at all.
No, no police, no fire.
Right? He said he was a liaison to the Police Department. I don't see that on here, but-
So what, this, so this list was a consolidation of either, as you can see, there's some dormant lists, but just the history of boards that we've had, or, or just, just any sort of listing, just for your own knowledge.
All right, so, so for the next meeting, Becky, can you just, like, print this, so we know where we stand, and if anyone wants to change things, or add anything, we'll just do it then.
And then they got that 150th anniversary, Secu-zenio, that's on there.
How do you pronounce that?
Secu-zenio.
Sashawana hat?
That's easier than, that's easier than your last name.
That's true. I haven't gotten that down yet.
Well, I didn't, still can't figure out what that guy's first name was, who was doing the audit, I-
Fonzerelli.
I don't know, yeah.
Torrencio?
Torrencio?
That's his first name.
That's his first name?
Last name.
That goes Arthur Fonzerelli.
Yeah, all right, so, we'll get here by the way.
Not tried.
All right, so, so if we just can get those printed for that, just to go down the list and make sure we all know where we are next time.
Right.
And I guess we're going to go, we can do the, we can do our schedule.
Chris, can I stop you for one second? You said you were going to do a motion for our treasurer collateral.
Oh, okay, yeah, so I'll make the motion, so I make a motion that, I make a motion in regards to the, let me just do the language right, so- Cheryl, what's the status of the report?
Chair, we'd rather wait and just have everyone-
Okay.
-sign it, just so it doesn't bounce back.
All right, no problem. Yeah, we, yep, how many secrets are we looking for? A bunch?
Five pages left, do you want me to page it?
Yeah, we can do it, before we leave tonight, we'll get it done.
Yeah.
So, the schedule, it's for the, for the SPEA West schedule.
I got it, yeah.
There's a couple changes that I suggested, and I have a couple of different reasons why, but I was thinking we would move our regular meeting from the seventh to the fourteenth, and from the 21st to the 28th, because the seventh to the fourteenth will give the department head some extra time to-
Are you looking in August?
August.
Right. There's a, that move would give the department heads a little bit of time to read the lip and the MOA, and get back to us with their comments.
I agree.
And then on the 21st, as an open date, if we needed to do something in regards to any public type of meeting or anything, we could do it then, and then we have a, two weeks till the 28th to discuss the, you know, the other stuff, as it relates to it, but I think, you know, we're asking them to go through that, and we won't have anything back by the seventh, that's only a week away. So by the fourteenth, we, you know, we have a chance of having most of the department heads have read that, and, and get back with some comments.
I agree.
Just, and, and so, does anybody object to changing those two dates?
Just the number ones.
So the fourteenth and the 28th, rather than the seventh and the 21st? 21st is my birthday, don't make it too taxing.
What are the dates again, now, that we're switching to?
We're going to go to the 14th and 28th, rather than the seventh and 21st.
Seven and 21, okay.
And that will, that may, that way, hopefully, we would have a, you know, at least some of the input back from the department heads. And I, and like I said on the note, what I, that I sent, when we sent all that stuff out, I think that this should be, you know, until we get to the point where, until it's done, until it's, until it's done or not done, or there's a determination, we should put that on our agenda, you know, every week, for whatever discussions take place, or for whatever information comes in, or, you know, whoever, whatever department head or wants to weigh in, or, you know, whoever else we need to. We should put the powder mill stuff on every week, as a, you know, a standing item on the agenda for the time being.
And I, I would suggest that maybe by the 28th, we get the marijuana thing resolved, too?
Yeah, we have to do the marijuana thing.
Right, by the 28th, maybe.
So I would, I would put the marijuana thing on for the, maybe for the 14th, and just kind of go through it, and see what, you know, maybe, hopefully have it done by the, by the first week in September, at the end of August.
That one's done.
It still seems, sounds like from Kate, that the state still has a long way to go.
Yes.
There's a lot more forms on the cannabis website right now, that they do have forms and documentation, and so, because I was there today, so it is available to read.
Okay, does anybody else have anything scheduled in the, you know, the long range things, they might see a date anywhere along the way that they might not be available, or in the area or something?
No, but I do think we should bounce around because of the election day, September 4th, that we should, you know, schedule the meeting on, for a different date, whether it's Wednesday, the 5th, or just skip a week.
Now, why don't we meet on Election Day? Is it just because-
Because people are working the halls.
We do it for-
Oh, okay.
Because certain people can't be here, because they're working, and then also Town Hall is busy with people in and out.
Okay, all right.
So you want to do the same thing, and go from the, go, go, take September, and go the 11th and the 25th?
That's fine with me.
As opposed to the 4th and the 18th? Just push them back a week each, so we're not, you know, doing two weeks in a row?
Or we could do the 5th, the day after.
That's fine, too.
And the 18th.
That's okay, too. So you want, so is everybody okay with the 5th and the 18th?
Sure.
I mean, the way it is right now, right?
No.
Right now, it's the 4th.
No, so September 5th-
Okay, got you.
And September 18th.
Yes.
And then we probably want to do the same thing, November 6th to the 7th.
Correct.
So make November 6th, November 7th. I'm coming on New Year's Day, is just one you guys know.
Absolutely.
So scheduled meeting, so we can take that week off. Well, we probably won't be able to take that week off, because it's going to be a busy season, so maybe we could do it with January-
January 8th.
8th, yeah, we could do the 8th and the 15th back-to-back weeks.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know, maybe, maybe somewhere between December 25th and January 8th, we might need a meeting, because it's, you know, it's so deep into the budget season. And hopefully, we'll have more input into the budget this year than we had in the past years.
We don't have any understanding yet of whether or not we'll have a, I assume we're not having a, a fall town meeting.
No, not in the fall, not enough time to prepare, but that's a good point.
Maybe February.
So maybe, so that even makes it more important, that January be sort of filled up with meetings to make sure we have the dates that are met and everything else.
I agree.
So what, that's-
Well, that's where it is, February Special Town Meeting Suggested Date.
That's right.
Was on December 21st.
So do we want to go January 2nd? Everybody okay with the January 2nd date?
Yep, sure.
I can't think that far out.
My calendar doesn't go that far.
The day after New Year's Day.
2nd.
Only date I have travel, it's late, late September.
I got it.
New York City.
Nice.
Yeah, I'm not really anxious to go.
So, from January 8th and January, no, January-
January 2nd and January 15th.
January 15th.
Yeah.
And should, do we go January 29th, too, because of the, the budget season?
Are you going Florida?
Don't worry about me.
Yeah.
I'll be, I'll be, I'll go to Florida, I'll leave the 16th and come back the 28th or something. Well, I'll miss, I'll have to miss the 16th, 15th or something, but I won't be, I'll be in Florida for some of it.
So we said the 2nd of January, the 15th of January?
Yep, 2nd, 15th, maybe the 29th.
29th, you can play that all year.
Yeah.
Because if you have a special town meeting on February 4th.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We also need to know, what's the date for this year's February meeting? So we can already have that on our radar.
It's the-
I know, it's by charter.
2/9/19.
February 9th, it's on the bottom there, you can scroll up, there you go. Yep.
Yeah, on top of this.
It's fine. That seems okay.
I'll show you a draft at the next meeting, and if it's okay, you can approve it.
Sounds good.
Did, um, did we change the May ones, or are we not going that far? Actually, no, no, yeah, because we've got the Board of Selectmen regular meeting and a town election.
Yep, we should, we should schedule around that date, too. Which is May 7th is, is Election Day?
Yep, I guess.
But, so we wouldn't have been meeting that day?
Even though it's the regular-
Because, oh, it's the first, it is the first Tuesday, we would be. So we would want to move that one, either the, the annual town meeting's the 20th.
And then would we meet the 21st, even though?
We have in the past.
You may have a two-night town meeting to consider as well.
We'll get everything done in one night.
Are you calling for a two-night town meeting?
Suggesting that you want to consider that the next night is supposed to be a board meeting night, but it might not be available.
Can it, like, double count, like a two-for-one?
Yes! Get all these people at the meeting?
Oh, well, yeah, it's considered an all-board meeting, so you are a meeting. Yeah, you just have to have a larger audience.
Great.
You'd best leave the basket twice.
All right, so what do we want to do for May, do we want to do May 8th, Ben? Or instead of May 7th?
Well, given the proximity to town meeting, I think the 8th is probably best.
Okay.
Because then we can leave open the 14th, in case we need to meet again before town meeting.
Before town meeting. And then do we want to schedule, what do we want to do for the 21st? Do you want to have a meeting, or do you want to not have a meeting, or do you want to postpone the meeting?
You could have articles that may need to have the next step done at the next meeting.
At the, well, right, 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 so, so it should just be, again, a day later, the 22nd?
We have, we have typically met the next night.
Yeah.
The next, so, that's second-
Agenda of light.
So we'll meet the 21st, okay, all right.
It's May 21st, so-
Yeah, that's a, that's a day.
A long board, okay, I'll leave that.
Yeah.
And then June 4th, June 18th.
So you'll type up a final?
Yes.
You'll tell us what we just agreed to.
I hope so.
Thank you.
All right. Priorities?
Wait, we still, we have to set the Saturday meeting, too, right?
Yep.
Okay.
What Saturday is it?
The special.
February? Yeah, it's February 9th. It's on the, it's on, it's on another form.
Oh, okay.
So, um-
On Saturday, Saturday.
So, so-
So don't we do one, like, now, like, beginning of the year?
That's this one, I think, this is the priorities.
So, um, yeah, so the, the priorities is usually on a, well, usually on a Wednesday or Thursday night.
Oh.
Usually on a weeknight. So, just so, Armin and Justine know, that we, every year, we are required to have a separate meeting for, to discuss our priorities for the fiscal year ahead, so we usually do it in August, and it's usually on a Wednesday or a Thursday night, typically it's at the Council on Aging area, at the golf course, and we order food, and we just kind of go over what our priorities for the coming year are, kind of shoot some ideas up on easel awards, and then kind of, you know, from that, we call out what we think are the most important priorities, and then we print up a document with them, and the idea is that we will kind of keep tabs on those priorities through the year, as we go ahead. Last year, you know, there were Economic Development, Communication, Staffing Administration, and then a bunch of subchapters, and each one of those, three main, main categories, and just, you know, probably affect the main category. So that's what we do with the priority meeting. Does anybody have any dates that they can't do in, the second or third, let's say the third or fourth week in August?
Well, it's, in August or September?
August.
Okay. Wide open in August.
So probably, like, you know, just only for, for no other reason, and I don't know-
I'm going on the week of the 20th.
I'm on vacation between the 16th and the 24th.
All right, so, how about Thursday, the 30th of August?
I could do that.
That's fine for me.
Is that okay?
Yep.
All right, so the 30th of August it is?
What time are we going to do?
Um, we usually do it around, we usually do it a little early, but if that, if that's a problem for people, we can do it at the regular time. We've done it in the past at, like, 6:00 only, because we've kind of ordered food and that type of thing.
Like, earlier, earlier, then we get home earlier.
Um, I can make 6:00 with, with, I'm good.
It's first room.
This much advance notice. I should be able to.
All right, so, um, can we do 6 o'clock on the 30th of August, Becky?
Yep.
Kind of booked.
Okay, just get the council to let us know, and we'll be good to go.
And you're right, and that was a good facility, as far as, like, accommodations.
Yeah, it works well, no one comes.
Yeah, you know, as a matter of fact, we, if we want, if we want, we can have the, we can have the girl, we can have Lee Anne prepare food for us.
That makes sense.
I mean, her food is, her food is good.
Yeah.
I can talk to her about that, I see her only six days a week. So I'll talk to her and ask her, and give her the date, and ask her what our choices might be, and she'll make whatever we want, or we can just order off whatever menu they have there. Town Administrator Report was in the-
I'll keep it brief. But, Melissa, I want to say thank you, first of all, for the opportunity to serve the town. I'm very excited, I've had a long seven days, sitting in the office, and, but it's, it's been fun-filled, and I'm not trying to be sarcastic, I really have enjoyed myself, e- even kind of feeling a certain level of stress, and sort of the overwhelming presence of, of the job, but I really like it. So that being said, let's just get to some quick business. So, I don't know if you all have noticed, but on the north end of the, well, I don't
I'll keep it brief. But, well, so I wanna say thank you first of all for the opportunity to serve the town. I'm very excited. I've had a long seven days sitting in the office and, but it's, it's been fun filled and I'm not trying to be sarcastic. I really have enjoyed myself. Even kind of feeling a certain level of stress and sort of the overwhelming presence of the job, but I really like it. So that being said, let's just get to some quick business. So I don't know if y'all have noticed, but on the north end of the, well, I don't know if you've seen the mural progress, the Maynard's Campus, we have pictures of here, what's the name of the building?
Yeah, it looks great.
Murphy Snyder.
Murphy Snyder, right.
I thought you were gonna be gone.
They're here on weekends. They stuttered this past weekend. I watched them.
They replaced them.
Okay, you seen, yes, oh great. They're two guys.
They're incorporating the windows actually into the art, so on the other side it'll be incorporated into the art as well.
Well, there you go. No, so it's, so I'm happy to see that moving along. That's something that, that, you know, we're gladly supporting on and I haven't heard any stags, but we'll keep you informed.
I think it'd be great if we could like promote it and get Maynard some publicity, like call the Globe when it's done.
Absolutely. I met with our PR firm today, so.
Oh, there you go. First project.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, that's right. And then the second side, what I've been briefed is that, you know, we'll be starting sometime in August. So I don't know what the end date is. Do we have an expected sort of? Yeah, I'm not sure about the other side, but this one should be done during the month of August. The other one might depend on when he starts. They're both from out of state, so it's unclear how long they're coming in for.
They're only coming for the weekends right now.
Yeah. Okay.
I see, I saw some people whining about it on the, on different social media sites, so it's like, well, if you didn't have the time to come here and see when the presentations are made, make your opinions known. You shouldn't take the time to go on Facebook or anywhere else and make your opinions known, so.
Do they not like the design or not like the fact that we're going there?
They don't like anything. They don't like anything.
Well, there's no such thing as bad publicity, so at least other people are seeing those comments.
They give a bag of money and they complain it's too heavy to carry home.
So.
The particular people that are complaining about it, it's like they complain about life. But it looks good. That one looks good. It's gonna make a difference.
Yep. So just moving along, so we, we did receive the notification that we'd be the recipients of the Green Communities Grant, which is very exciting. $242,936.
What grant was that, correct?
Green, another Green Communities. Green Communities Grant?
Got it.
It's 112 to the schools, right? It was 112 for the schools, there was some for the, for this building.
I have the breakdown. I'll just go down real quick. Okay, so $35,158 to the Fowler School for its demand control ventilation. Aaron would be able to speak more detail if you need these. 207, or I'm sorry, $27,429 for the Fowler Schools retro commissioning. $57,619 for the library's LED lighting. $72,703 for town hall's boilers and $50,027 for the high school's LED lighting. So I'll have to kinda get a grip as to what the project timeline for that is, but I know Aaron obviously is on top of it and you'll be able to provide that to me.
Can we just, could you just mention to him the comments that we got tonight about the cemetery?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, I understand where, where they're coming from, but conversely, over the past year or so, we've actually had several people come in and say just the opposite and thank the town for having the cemetery in such good shape and keeping it in such good shape. So, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna argue with somebody as to what their opinion is, but.
Right.
Clearly, we've had people come in this building and come into this room and actually I think we have a couple correspondences that came through our correspondences that, you know, suggest that the cemetery was in great shape. Actually, somebody that came here that was a longtime resident and had moved away, was back in the area, went to visit their parents' grave and were thankful that it was so nice and everything was so well kept.
Okay.
So it's, it seems that there's two different trains of thought on the cemetery, but.
Perception is reality and I think we, we should be able to provide answers to her sort of concerns.
Did we ever have water there? Provided water for water in the?
The water line's still down.
Down?
I believe so.
What was your question, Armin?
The water line over the cemetery.
So it may still be down. When Aaron took me around the other day, there was, the water truck was still out there, so. But I'll be able to provide those answers, yeah.
And on the cemetery, there was a Eagle Scout project.
Yes, there was.
That was focused on the cemetery and on veterans' graves in particular that addressed, you know, some of the stuff that, that she was speaking about. I can certainly appreciate her thoughts, but, you know, when you look at the landscaping that most of the people, that, you know, the DPW guys are involved and the landscaping looks good and in the fall, it's always spectacular when the trees come out. You know, some of the things with the aging of the, of the cemetery itself as far as the dropping in of the, cause what happened was, you know, the cemetery things, the whatever they're called, the headstones just start dropping in. That takes things like the Boy Scouts getting involved and the community getting involved and, you know, lift them back up.
Interesting. No, that's, okay, that's a good point. But yeah, I, I took a lot of notes and I, and I hope to go over this with Aaron. It would be on our list anyways to kinda get a grip over the cemetery and that's what I'll use. Speaking of Aaron, so he went over the, the south of the wells with me last week and I, and I'm curious to know what the results of our, our current efforts to be able to, you know, revive the well that's down on Rockland. So it was air bursting was the technique that they were gonna do. I'm not an engineer, so all I can do is kinda tell you that is one of multiple attempts that we're going to be doing and I need to know the results they were doing today. So, right. But I do have a good amount of confidence in Aaron, in Wayne, the engineer and the rest of the team at Stan Tech and our, and our contractors, that they are on top of it. And I did get a chance to drive out there to see it. It's not much to see, but at least I can tell that I've seen, I've seen where they're at.
So you went down Rockland?
Yeah, I have been down Rockland.
Just a hole in the ground.
What, Rockland? No.
Well.
It's two holes now.
Okay.
Twelve feet apart.
So speaking of which, so I've, I've been trying to get on the belt just as, as, just to kinda keep you abreast, although I've met with a number of you and soon to be all, that, that I've been doing the best I can to make myself as available as possible to sort of kinda get a grip or sort of get an awareness or an understanding of the status of the town and the relationships that we have. Which I see as the resources that am I just not disposable, but the resources I should be able to tap into to be able to get the work done. So I've met with a number of the department heads. I've met with our legal counsel, Lisa Mead. I met, I did meet with Dr. Girardi the other day at his office. I met some of his staff. I was able to meet with FinCom just through coinciding that they haven't had meetings in that amount of time, Economic Development Committee. I've met with Chief Dubois, Chief Stowers, toured the fire department, or fire station, and just different members of the community and whatnot. And like I said, I'm trying to make myself available so that I can kinda be caught up and understand where we are. And I've been taking your recommendations as to who else to meet and please continue to send those. We also had a employee cookout today, which I thought was a great success and I wanna thank publicly Stephanie Dugan for, for hosting that and running it and, and even though she's very humble and likes to say everyone else is doing a lot of the work, that she was the spearhead of that and I wanna say that publicly. It was great. I ate a lot and I hope everyone else did. And then lastly, I do plan on taking vacation with the consent of the board, so for the week of August 13th through the Friday. What that would mean is that I would have to be absent the 14th, the August 14th.
Denied.
No, so, but obviously the town will be in, in good hands.
Okay. I, thank you.
That's all.
I don't, everything that I had written down for the chairman's report, we discussed, we covered it in the scheduling and the other stuff, but so I'm all set, so. Board reports. Melissa?
I don't remember any.
Justine?
I don't have anything.
Armin?
I heard from Bill Nemza that he's working on nuisance bylaws and I did too, just Justine's recommendation, reach out to him and he, he said that he's gonna put together some bylaws in regards to some of the properties there are, they need some attention, so.
Did you say nuisance?
Nuisance bylaws.
Blighted, blighted properties.
Yeah. What's it called?
I think Bill calls them blight. B-L-I-G-H-T.
There's a planning definition for blight.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Yeah, and I think, I think actually, I think, doesn't.
Building commissioner.
Yeah, doesn't.
Yeah, he told me the building inspector should actually, he's taken a look at that stuff too.
Depends on the laws. It's police, Board of Health.
Is that right?
And Building Commissioner.
We've, we tried to address that in the past and it's always, it's very difficult because, you know, it gets too restrictive, it gets too, you know, there's always, you know, extenuating circumstances and those types of things.
I just think that some of the properties are so visual and it just, an eyesore, when, especially when you go down Powdermill Road and you see it, something that needs to.
Stream too.
Yeah, Parker also, there's a couple of them on Parker that I'm aware of at least, you know. So that makes it, ironically, one of the properties right next to this new mural that's gonna be built nearby, so, yeah, it's gonna have a nice mural.
Well, hopefully the mural has certain influence over the surrounding.
And it's just, just something that I wanna stay focused on, I think.
David?
Yeah, my quick comment. Greg, first off, welcome and we'll talk after the meeting because we have to make an arrangement. Being a military guy, you probably have this, you know, when they switch over command, there's always an inventory of, of property and equipment and everything else so that you know what you're turning over.
You have to sign for it.
Exactly. I would like us to try to do that with our town equipment, specifically vehicles, to know where our vehicles are and if there are any extra vehicles, where they are and.
Sure.
You know, just what we've got for any extra, extra equipment.
Insurance list, we have the mock list.
Becky keeps the titles in our office too.
I have all the titles, every single title.
That's a great question and I should be able to have, I would like to know as well, so, yeah, we would definitely be able to provide you that satisfaction.
I'm sure the, the information's available. I just wanna make sure that we have it, we know what they are and if there is extra equipment that we may, you know, if there's a vehicle that's not used at all, you know.
Good to know. Yeah, I agree.
Could we sell, could we do anything with it, who knows, but just to make sure we're not wasting assets. That's it.
All right, our next meeting is August 14th and make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
How was the favor? Done. Peace. Peace.